Welcome and thank you for being with us tonight, Thursday, October 6th, for the Emeryville City Council Candidate Forum. My name is Alisa Mills of the League of Women Voters of Berkeley Albany Emeryville. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not support or oppose candidates or parties. The advocacy arm of the league may take positions on issues such as ballot measures. However, this forum is presented by the Voter Services and Education Arm of the League, which does not support or endorse candidates. The co-sponsor for this forum is the Emeryville PTA. We hope that you are here because you want to make smart choices when you vote. The league is here to help you to make a smart choice, and we use a few simple rules to be sure you have the information you will need to help you make that decision through a fair and balanced process. It is important to the league to give the community a voice, which is why we invited the community to send us questions for the candidates in advance. Those questions have been sorted by a team of league leaders to avoid duplicate questions and select those questions that are most important to the community. I'd like to remind everyone that the candidates have all agreed to participate under ground rules set for this forum. You can see the rules on our website on the candidate forum page. One of our volunteers will also put the link in the chat. We are recording this forum and the video will be available on our website, L W V V A E dot org, on our YouTube channel and through votersedge.org/CA with links on our social media accounts, at L W V V A E. There are five candidates running for Emeryville City Council. They are Sukti Kaur, David Mura, Kalima Pryforce, Eugene Sway, and Brooke Westling. You can vote for two candidates. City council members are decided through a plurality vote. With a plurality vote, the candidates who receive the highest number of votes will be declared the winners. Now let's go over a few rules for this forum. Each candidate has two minutes for opening remarks. The order was determined by drawing lots. The timekeeper will signal candidates with a green colored window, which will count down the seconds from two minutes to 15 seconds to go. Then it will turn yellow and then red when the full two minutes is up. Attendees had an opportunity to submit written questions through our website or when they registered for the forum via Zoom. If you have additional questions, you may submit them by clicking the Q and A icon and typing your questions. Our volunteers will take the questions and pass them to me. All questions will be screened to avoid duplication and personal attacks. Please note that the chat function has been disabled for attendees. The order of answering the questions will be alternated, and each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. Again, the timekeeper will signal candidates. There will be no separate rebuttals. However, the candidates may choose to use some or all of their one minute to rebut the response given by another candidate. Following the questions, each candidate shall have one minute for a closing statement. Before we begin, one of the candidates, Brooke Westling, cannot attend due to a personal urgent issue. Therefore, she provided a statement, and here is a statement from Brooke Westling. My name is Brooke Westling, and I'm running for Emeryville City Council. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event, and I truly regret that I am unable to attend live. I am also happy to answer any questions via email at brookeforcitycouncil@gmail.com. My main goal is increasing long-term residents in our city to enhance civic engagement, safety, and quality of education. Over the past decade, I have seen our sense of community diminish. Much of this is due to the pandemic as well as issues such as the city's focus on high-rent, quick-build luxury rentals, the natural fallout between citizens and safety officers, and the adversarial political climate that extinguishes civil discourse and compromise. This can be achieved through an increase in affordable rentals that are sustainable for low- and middle-earning families, while also requiring portions of all new builds to be available for ownership, both at and below market rate. We also need to offer housing incentives and support for public servants working within the city of Emeryville. Our police, teachers, city officials, firefighters, and all the other people we rely on to keep our city running should not be priced out of the community that they serve and denied a voice in the democratic process that directly impacts their livelihood. My educational and professional background have prepared me to take on this role. I earned a law degree with a certificate in alternative dispute resolution as well as an L L M in international legal studies with a focus on human rights. I've worked in state-level government, mediated pre-indictment criminal cases, served as a judicial officer for a teen diversion program, started and maintained an asylum legal clinic at a local law school. And sorry, I've run out of time. Okay, now let's begin with our candidates who are here in attendance. And to start, we shall begin with David Mura, and he'll have two minutes to speak.
Hi, thank you for hosting the event, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to share my vision for the city. So I've lived in Emeryville for 14 years. It's very much my home. I'm raising my kids here. So naturally, I want it to be the best it can possibly be. A big part of my vision for the city is actually to build more housing. This is both a market rate and affordable housing, and incentivize developers to do this. This is a big part of my work on the City Planning Commission, where developers can earn bonus points for things like family, let's call it a family-friendly housing, like three-bedroom units. And then with these developments, we can also significantly improve the surrounding neighborhoods. We can get wider sidewalks, interconnected bike lanes, better traffic safety for pedestrian and bike crossing. So these are all things that we need for a more walkable, bikable, vibrant city. And more people also means more support for local cafes, bars, restaurants. We need parklets and people sitting outside, eating and drinking. And I think this was a nice thing that we saw, a small silver lining during the pandemic. And I see Emeryville is uniquely positioned in the Bay Area. We're small, but we're nimble. We can get these things done. Sometimes you see San Francisco and Berkeley kind of bickering over building housing or unable to make dedicated bike paths. And in Emeryville, we simply do it. So you know, we're not going to solve the housing crisis single-handedly. It's a big problem, but we can do our part, and we can inspire neighboring cities to see what's possible. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from Sukti.
Thank you, League of Women Voters, for having me here today. Good evening, everyone. I'm an Emeryville resident for over 14 years. I moved here as a renter and have been a homeowner for the last 10 years. I absolutely love living here and have a vested interest in finding solutions together for smart growth and improved quality of life while maintaining Emeryville's unique character of a city known for art and innovation. Professionally, I'm a senior trial attorney, trained to do research and find cost-effective solutions for my clients. Independent thinking and research, while considering and respecting diverse opinions, are values that I live by and will bring to the city council. I'm endorsed by the community members of all party affiliations, including some small businesses, current mayors of San Pablo and El Cerrito, county supervisors of Santa Clara and Stanislaus. I look forward to your support and thank all of you who have supported me in many unexpected ways during my campaign. I look forward to providing you with quality representation. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Eugene Sway. Oh, you're still muted. Sorry.
Is that right? Is that okay?
Yes.
You can hear me. So I'm a 33. Thank you very much for allowing me this time to speak. I'm a 33-year resident of Emeryville, California. I've raised three children and was on the Finance Committee of Watergate, which represents about a quarter of the population. I'm co-founder of the Emeryville Community Garden, president of the Emeryville High School PTA in 2005 to 2007, associate with the Green Belt Alliance to design and plan the growth of the San Francisco Bay Area from 1986 to 2016. I'm the eight-time World Amateur Boxing Champion, four-time Senior Olympic Gymnastics All-Around Champion, and eight-time United States President's Sports Award winner, conferred by Bill Clinton and George Bush. I'm a graduate of the Berkeley, UC Berkeley, with master's degrees in architecture and regional planning and an interdisciplinary PhD in architecture and education. I'm a senior lecturer at UC Berkeley, at San Francisco State, and San Francisco Institute of Architecture, and have been a visiting professor at University of Ohio as well as a research scholar at Harvard University. I have written seven international books on architecture, ecology, and human behavioral change, and over 100 articles in magazines and newspapers throughout the world. I am a featured on several, I have been featured on several television programs like National Geographic Discovery Channel, The Learning Channel, CNN, Mcdeal-Lairport, and so on. And won prizes from American Institute of Architects and the Graham Foundation and the National Endowment for the Arts. I was given the title of Guardian Angel of the Planet by Project Coyote, and I'm very concerned about how my background can influence the future of Emeryville.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from Kalima Pryforce.
Thank you. So my name is Kalir Pryforce. He/him unceded or lonely land, and I believe Emeryville is a city of the future. My candidate colleagues and I mutually share a love for our city. But we feel instinctually what others feel, in our gut, that our city has changed since COVID. A rising tide in crime, redevelopment that costs our city more than we can afford, and a shuttering of mainstay mom-and-pop businesses are just a few reasons why I'm here. Now, my accolades, you can find that on Voters Edge. But I want to take this time to highlight an incident from two days ago. At a private event held by three candidates for Emory School Board, mostly women of color, another candidate, white male, appeared and made many uncomfortable, including a young man who I got to sat with when I arrived, who told me he was frightened by this person. And I know what it is to be that young man. Emeryville has been my home for 10 years, and it should be safe for my wife and daughter, safe for everyone. These kinds of behaviors where women and their families feel unsafe should be repudiated. I condemn the behaviors. Thanks to the League of Women Voters and the super awesome Voters Edge platform for allowing my team and I to be a part of this substantive discussion.
Okay, thank you all. So now it's the time for the candidates to answer your questions. And we shall start off hearing from Kalima. Here is the first question that everyone will get. What will be your top political priorities if elected?
Sure, thank you for the question. So when I became, when I decided to run for city council, I already knew that Emeryville was really strong when it comes to affordable housing, strong when it comes to transportation. And so we have our strengths, and we do it really well. So I'm not going to address those. I'm just going to trust my colleagues. They're doing a fantastic job. What I want to focus on is how do we make Emeryville a better place to work and live and play? One of the most important parts of my platform is an innovation corridor where new nonprofits and startups, entrepreneurs, would be subsidized to come to Emeryville and set up shop. And so I like to have Emeryville be a mecca for new entrepreneurs, new innovators, people who can bring their really amazing ideas to Emeryville and make Emeryville just a better, brighter place to live.
All right, thank you very much. And Eugene Sway.
One thing is that I will be here 24/7. I'm available all times of the day and night, every day. And I want to be that available, accessible to everyone in Emeryville. And I'm a long-term thinker. I want to think about how do we improve the relationship between schools, businesses, and the local government so that we can prepare for the long-term challenges that we face ahead of us? And how then do we create this relationship with businesses and government and schools? Because the relationship right now is broken. And my intention is to unify the schools and the businesses and local government to look into the long-term future of the challenges that we face for Emeryville.
Okay, thank you very much. And now David Mura.
Yes, so my priorities, and I see them as all interlinked. First and foremost is housing. Kalima mentioned that, you know, we're doing a good job on housing, but I think we can absolutely do better. You know, there were, there are so many opportunities to have more family-friendly housing to incentivize developments. You know, I've lived next to this vacant parking lot for the last 15 years. They recently repaved it. You know, what's going on in terms of the economic incentives where that property is not being developed? You know, is there a way to tax that land what it's worth and incentivize development there? Or have the owner sell it to somebody who will? There are, and then after housing, you know, a big part of that is community safety. And when you build these developments, you can have the expanded bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure and open green space. You can fund better lighting. You can have services. I'm out of time. Thank you.
Yes, yes. And now we'll hear from Sukti.
Thank you. I'm trying to unmute my audio. Yes. My priorities here would be climate change. I would like to address the, we have a great climate action plan. I read it. I just think that it can be improved a little bit. Water shortage is something which is a statewide problem. I hope to address it with the climate, within the climate change action plan at the local level. I have some ideas which I hope I would get to explore if I'm on the city council. Housing also can be improved. I agree with David. We can do better with the housing plan. We can attract more families. One of the things I would like to see in our housing element would be to prioritize the housing for people who are already living or working in Emeryville. It would give them an incentive to be invested in Emeryville's long-term growth and make us a more engaged community.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to the next question, and we'll start with Eugene. And here's the question. In your professional or civic life, describe an instance where you addressed a complex issue and brought different stakeholders together to find a path forward.
As the president of the PTA in the Emeryville High School, there were many factions that argued about what was the most important aspect of children's education and the relationship with the city. And these factions, I think that I was a principal reminder that we have to create, that we have to remind ourselves, what is the goal? What is the ultimate result that we want to achieve? And how do we, how do we come together to achieve that goal? So I think the goal-oriented structure of conversation has turned out to be a very, very important and successful way to achieve, to achieve the results.
Thank you. And next, we'll hear from Sukti.
Thank you. So I will, with regard to bringing stakeholders together in my professional career, I've done that many times, but I will bring up this one instance where I was the founding attorney of a nonprofit called Professionals and Workers Compensation many years ago. At that time, we were establishing this foundation or this nonprofit while there was another one existing in town. So there were many stakeholders competing as to which one to be a member of and how to support or whether or not to support the one that I was founding. Eventually, I was able to bring all the stakeholders together, and we were able to do events with both organizations together, and we were supported by the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Now let's hear from Kalima.
So you can find it on YouTube, where Van Jones likes to tell the story of when he and I were talking about doing a hackathon. And it was a hackathon to address police brutality. And I said to him, well, why don't we involve the police? Why don't we have the kids working alongside them? And he says that that was, he said it was an emotional, it was a very emotional moment where that showed where I was at in terms of how to bring people together. Recently with Emeryville, it was through the Tenant Board Association. And the Tenant Board Association started from the Courtyard 65th Street. We brought a lot of communities together, several other apartment buildings in order to deal with issues with our property manager. And so it's about bringing people together and using a convening power to have people talk to one another.
Thank you. Now let's hear from David.
So I'm the treasurer for my homeowners association. And a few years back, we were looking at a major budget shortfall and possibly the need to raise dues significantly on the members. So, and this is, we have a lot of retirees and fixed-income folks. It was a very troubling issue for them. And we were trying to think, you know, how the best absorb these costs. And that's when I sat down with the other board members, and we went through the budget, line item by line item, discussed each item. And we actually found a lot of items in the reserve that were being overfunded. And we were able to move some things around and avoid a significant increase in dues and find something that was easier to absorb for the membership.
Okay, thank you very much. Now for our next question, we'll start with Sukti. And here's the question. According to a recent article published by Yahoo News, Emeryville is now one of the 10 most unaffordable cities in the nation. How would you approach this issue if elected?
Thank you for the question. Yes, so one of the things that I was talking about earlier, and I would like to elaborate on that, is the housing. The housing has the rents and the mortgages have not kept up with the wages or the salaries, especially in the Bay Area, despite us being one of the areas or the cities which has the highest rate of employment. So one of the things again that I would like to see in the housing element would be to prioritize the housing for people who are already living in Emeryville. And go ahead and try to house those people. That will also have an effect on climate change. It will help with reducing the greenhouse gases of people who commute in here. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Kalima.
So I grew up in a group home, and Beaufort-Stiles in Brooklyn. And so poverty and poverty alleviation is something that's really important to me. And it's one of the reasons why I am a below-market-rate resident here in Emeryville. And I know some of the tactics that property managers, that developers use to push us out of Emeryville. And that can make Emeryville unaffordable. One of the things that we can do is, it's not just focused on affordable housing, but focus on how, what is the living conditions of those who are in affordable housing? How do we support them? And even when it comes to our businesses, our mom-and-pop businesses, there were many of them who did not know how to apply for PPP loans. And that's something that we could have done. We could have supported them in creating a forum, that convening power I talked about, bring them together, and then create these educational courses for them.
Okay, thank you. And now David.
So clearly, building housing, right, is a long-term solution. But in the short term, programs like the Below Market Rate Program certainly help. And I think in addition to that, you know, for people who are in their homes and keeping them in their homes, you know, if they're being faced with significant rent increases that might cause housing instability, I think we should also be open to some type of thoughtful rent control measure is something that could help folks be able to afford their units while we get other homes online through simply increasing capacity in Emeryville and in surrounding cities.
Okay, thank you. And Eugene.
Coming at this from an architectural point of view, because I'm an architect, there are many ways to create affordable housing by questioning the assumptions that we make about how to build. We can build in much more efficient ways, in much cheaper ways that don't affect the climate change. For instance, we can eliminate air conditioning, heating, and ventilation. That will create a huge effect on improving climate change and making affordable housing much more affordable. And also, I think that creating a rent control initiative would be a good idea as well. Because I think it works. And I think if we give tax breaks to real estate developers, that that will help them to agree with a rental reduction.
Okay, thank you very much. Now for the fourth question, we will start with David, and here it is. According to a recent article published by the San Francisco Chronicle, the portion of I-80 from Emeryville to Albany was the second most deadly in the state with three fatal accidents per mile. What do you think you can do as a city council member to address this public safety issue?
So I assume these are freeway collisions? Well, I think I take the general point, right, which is, essentially, when you have cars trying to drive fast, you have bikes, all the different new electric-powered vehicles, electric bikes, scooters, right? Things can get dangerous. So I think it's important to have thoughtful arteries through the city where, you know, cars are able to go and we can keep bikes away from that, bikes and pedestrians. I think about like what the city's done with the Greenway, right, to make that safe for bikers and pedestrians. Right, to make that safe for uh bikers and pedestrians and uh, your vehicles generally avoid. Uh, those streets. Um, so I think looking at those intersections where those um. Those collisions happen. Uh, you know, I know uh, Powell and Christie is is another one. Uh, that needs some attention. So I think we can look at where these happen, map them out and solve them that way.
Thank you. And now let's uh, hear from Kalima.
Yeah, so um, yeah, I think David should speak more about it because he's he's uh, an expert uh, on this. Um, I know what it is to be riding with my godmother. Uh, who actually was one of those people who was pushed out of Emeryville for its unaffordable um, uh, uh, lifestyle. Um, and uh, and I remember we were almost in a a car accident because it was raining. And uh, and thankfully she she was driving. And she was able to uh, prevent a a collision and some someone uh. It the skid skid it off and 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 almost hit us. Um, and so I'm not sure what is causing this. Uh, for I think any issue, I'd probably just look at the data. See uh, like what's happening. Um, and because this is Oakland, Berkeley and San Francisco. Uh, that's happening. I'm not sure if that's e- exactly an Emeryville uh problem. Um, but I I definitely would sit sit with all three cities and find out from them what's going on.
Okay, thank you very much. And now Sukdeep.
Thank you. Uh, so yes, you said the San Francisco Chronicle stated this was a problems um, on eighty from San Francisco to Albany. So one thing I think that can be done to do this is to improve our public transportation. Uh, going in uh, to San Francisco and all the way to Albany, um, improve um. Those uh, measures where it would be easier for people to have another option. Versus uh, commute on the freeway. That would also go uh, to reducing the greenhouse gases and helping with the climate change. Number two, if people are using the freeway, we definitely need to get to the um. Get together with all Bay Area governments in the area together and uh, see what we can collectively come up with. To improve our freeways and make them accident free.
Hey, thank you. And Eugene.
I think this is a matter of research. We have to uh, we have to look at the data, ask questions to the police force. To Caltrans, to the medical teams involved, to hospitals. Uh, find out what is the reason for these accidents? Well, why, how is it that they were caused? And then and then only then can we come up with a solution. I think a lot of this that depends on investigation. And so we have to uh, bring together the these different factions like Caltrans and the police force and the ambulance forces. Medical teams to uh, to evaluate the the uh, the data. So that we can then develop an answer to why these things happen. Um, and because otherwise we would just be speculating. And it's very important that we find out what is the truth of the matter. And I think we've got to start there first.
Okay, thank you. Um. Now for the fifth question. We'll start with Kalima. Small businesses in Emeryville were struggling before the pandemic and the lockdowns and reduced foot traffic wiped many of them out completely. Is the city doing enough to support them? And if not, how will you change this if elected?
So unfortunately, uh, Emeryville doesn't have a chamber of commerce, so there isn't a representative body that can look after the interests of. Uh, small business owners. Um, uh, Rudy's Can't Fail almost went under. Um, uh, uh, the uh, Rotten City Pizza, they're uh, they're closing shop. I mean, there's just so many different places. Um, even when I do bo- uh, ballroom dancing, there's a ballroom dance studio that shut down. Um, and I honestly believe it's because while we're trying to bring in these developers and bring in these be- big retailers. The mom and pop shops, they're being pushed out. Um, they can't keep up. And I think that it's time that we prioritize them, find ways to to support them, e- even if it's a, if it's grants. That can uh, help them um, meet uh, some of the uh, uh, demands that. Uh, that that it comes to operating a business. And as someone who has started uh, business three times over and sold them. It it, the best thing is to get that kind of government support.
Hey, thank you. And David.
So the question was, is the city doing enough? I I I think the answer unfortunately is no. Um, I I. I recently ran into the owner of Los Moles, uh, and I was, he, his business was struggling due to some water damage that had happened. And um, I asked him why he uh, does not have a parklet outside. It seemed like a great location for outdoor dining after the pandemic. Uh, and he told me that he thought he was rejected by the city. Uh, so I reached out to the city on his behalf. And I found out that uh, it was just a breakdown in communication. There was something he needed to address with his application. Um, so it was that type of communication that, you know, he thought he his parklet was, application was rejected for two years. Uh, and we just found out that he just had to work through some details. And so now that I'm I'm happy to say that that's progressing again. And there's a lot of other uh permits for sidewalk dining and outdoor dining that are expiring. And I don't think the city is actively seeking out these business owners, so we should do that.
Thank you. And now Eugene.
I think we should look at other cities that are successful. And uh, and and many of the ones that I've studied in the past. Show that walking plazas, that restricting cars and and creating plazas for people. Increase businesses by three to fourfold. And so we need to underst- we need to to s- to look at what has worked for other cities and apply that to us. We could create, for instance, we could uh, we could combine Emeryville uh, the the uh, Emeryville Shopping Mall with the Bay Street. Create, make that into a walkable plaza area. That'd be quadrant it off from traffic, from from uh, car traffic. And I think that would create huge uh, amounts of uh, increase in businesses and retail establishments. Because of this uh, the walkability accessibility. And that kind of creativity, that kind of imagination, it has not shown itself. Uh, in in present times.
Okay, thank you. And now Sukdeep.
Yes, with regard to small businesses, the city definitely has an opportunity here to do much more than we are doing. And I hope to be a part of this solution. Um, if I am on the city council. I have talked to many small businesses. The biggest issues that they are facing are the rents that they pay. The energy bills that they pay. Uh, many cannot find employees uh, because the employees choose to. Uh, move out of the area or or not come to Emeryville as soon as they can find a job closer to where they live. Because Emeryville is, like you said, unaffordable in an earlier question. Um, so um, I I would love to be a part of the solution in at least trying to push some climate change dollars to reduce the. Energy costs of some of these businesses. And I would like to uh, definitely see them uh, as um, getting grants or getting more uh. Um, incentives to stay in Emeryville.
Okay, thank you. Um, and now for the next question, we shall start with Eugene. Now, Bay Street has been the target of looting, violence and massive brawls, mostly by unaccompanied youth. Are there any policies you would consider exploring to deter this behavior? That ultimately hurts Emeryville and the retail tax revenue this shopping center generates?
Absolutely. There is a proven solution. And it's proven itself in San Francisco and Portland and Seattle. And that is that you play classical music inside and outside the buildings. And that keeps away looters and bur- burglars and uh. Uh, it's proven to to minimize crime, if not er- eradicated completely. So we should use these kinds of methods that have proven themselves to work in other cities and apply them to Emeryville. I tried myself to call uh, CVS, the headquarters, to use this very same tactic. So that we can keep CVS open. And and I'm sure this would work for Bay, the Bay Street as well. And uh, I I was not able to get to the executive directors. So we should use. Methods like this that have proved them themselves to work. The uh, and and apply them to our own city.
Um, and now Sukdeep.
Yes, um, the most of the looters um, are from out of town. Um, that's my understanding and this is um, something that. Uh, definitely needs to be uh, improved. Um, I think that um, we, this is so- something that the police department also needs to uh, work on. In addition to Eugene's suggestion about classical music. Um, which I I really do, I have not seen the statistics, statistics on that, but it is very encouraging to me that that has worked. In uh, in other cities. So yes, coupled with what has worked in other cities, I think we could um. Definitely enhance our public safety um, and um, reduce these incidents. Uh, hopefully with. Police staffing, our police department, which is currently understaffed, um, maybe more police patrol. Or maybe increased security patrol in the retail areas.
Thank you. Um. And now we'll hear from David.
Uh, so I'm not a law enforcement professional. I I won't pretend to know the best way to discourage uh, this type of activity. Uh, however, I I take the main point of the question, which is that, you know, the incidents like this should be taken seriously. Uh, I've talked about making a uh, a livable, walkable, bikeable city. Uh, you know, where people are out and about. Um, and that only happens if people feel safe. Uh, so uh, incidents like this, I can assure you, um, I I would, you know, treat as a priority. To uh, talk to the law enforcement in the city and uh, figure out the best solutions, most most cost effective. Um, and you know, if it's playing classical music, let's do it, but let's uh, you know, get the professionals together and figure out the best way to uh, discourage that.
Okay, thank you. And. Let's see. Now we'll hear from Kalima.
Hi, uh, so uh, so Emeryville actually does uh, play uh, music. Uh, the Bay Street does play music. And it's a so different situation from uh, the mall where Best Buy and Target is that. That is heavily adult uh, looting. And so that's a uh, different issue. Um, the Bay Street specifically, a lot of it's underage. It's the hangout spot. Um, and so uh, it's so, and then these are our kids, these are our babies, so they don't need to be overpoliced. Um, I believe in providing police with more tools than toys. Um, and that's how we demilitarize our 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 police and and make them stewards of 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 community service. Um, and so if we have security cameras that take snapshots of when there are these like clusters of fights. Um, that happen and they're recording and we send those snapshots to their schools. And so their schools can identify that and we let them know that that's happening. I guarantee you, it will stop.
Hey, thank you. Um, this will be uh, then our final question uh, this evening for everyone. Um, we'll start with Sukdeep. And it's a short question. Please explain your position on Measure O.
Yes, on Measure O, this is um, this is a position, my position, but shortly is that I support Measure O. And um, one of the reasons that I support Measure O is because it is, it is the. Uh, it closes the city's uh, projected funding gap by modifying Emeryville's existing real property transfer tax. It improve, it is approved by the city. Um, if approved by the city voters, uh, Measure O will modify Emeryville's um. Um, property tax from twelve dollars to fifteen. Um, per thousand for the property sales between one million to two million and twenty-five per thousand for property sales. Above two million. So under this proposal, the real property transfer tax for properties valued at less than one million would remain unchanged. So I would support this.
Okay, thank you. And Eugene.
Yes, I I also would support it. I don't think that this is a hardship on uh, the people who who own uh, property in Emeryville. That uh, the to 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 change it from twelve to fifteen dollars per per thousand. Um, I I think that uh, it it it's reasonable. Um, uh, I own property in Emeryville. I mean, I I own my uh, place of of habitation. And uh, I don't think this would be a hardship on me or or any of the people I know who uh, who own in Emeryville. So I am supportive of Measure O. And uh, and I think it's it's reasonable and fair.
Okay, thank you. And Kalima.
So I had a uh, put up on my phone um, to uh, I I I received the endorsement of uh, of of council. Council member Courtney Welsh, uh, council member Diane Martinez and council member, uh, actually Vice Mayor, uh, Ally Medina, uh, because I signed a pledge. Um, uh, that says that I support, I don't know if you can see it. Well, I'll put it on my website, uh, voteprideforce.com. That's where I place my platform. Uh, I signed a pledge supporting uh, Measure O and um. It I I already has, a lot has been said about it, but the one of the reasons why I signed the pledge. Uh, that includes uh, support for uh, Emeryville's minimum wage and fair work ordinances. Um, uh, a pro housing designation and also our active transportation plan. And also the collegial and effective reputation of the city council by treating colleagues and staff with respect. And um, and you know what, I I the. I I, the reason why I support, well, because Measure O just makes sense, but uh, the reason why I signed the pledge is because I believe we should better attract. Uh, folks who want to work for Emeryville.
Hey, thank you very much. And David.
Uh, so I support Measure O. Um, i- if not for any other reason, then it brings the real estate, uh, this this transfer tax in line with neighboring cities. Right? Um, there's, there's no reason for the city to not be competitive in that sense. Uh, and the uh, the funding gap is real. Um, you know, it doesn't, it's not like we're wasting money. Um, and the measures that are funded, you know, around public safety, public works. Uh, to address the shortfall um, are very worthwhile. And also the impact, you know, is primarily hitting properties above two million dollars or between uh, one and two million dollars. Um, yeah, and then it yeah, jumps up at at two million. So you know, this will hit uh, commercial folks, uh, you know, a lot more than um, residential. Uh, so I I do support it for all of those reasons.
Okay, thank you very much. Now. Before the candidates give their closing statements, I have a few remarks on behalf of the LWVBAE. Thank you to the candidates for running for office and for your participation this evening. I also want to thank the audience for engaging in our democracy. For further information about upcoming forums, the candidates. Pros and cons and positions on ballot measures. Please visit our league's website, lvvbae.org or votersedge.org slash C A. We invite you to join the league to help us engage voters and defend democracy. We do so much more than voter registration and education. We work on issues like climate change, criminal justice reform, healthcare and much more. Visit our website and social media accounts at LWVBAE. The deadline to register to vote is October twenty-fourth this year. You can register to vote online at the Secretary of State's website, sos.ca.gov. Vote by mail ballots will be sent to all registered voters from October tenth. Remember to return your vote by mail ballots by Tuesday, November eighth. Or vote in person at any of the vote centers in Alameda County. We are encouraging voters to vote as early as possible. For more information about voting in this election, please visit our website. L W V B A E dot org slash elections. Or votersedge.org slash C A. Or the Alameda County Registrar of Voters website, acvote.gov. Now, the candidates will make closing statements. We will. We will reverse the order that we began with. Each candidate will give a closing statement of one minute each. So we shall start with then Kalima.
So recently, there was a Democrat unity dinner. And Sukthi and Eugene, we all took a picture together. It was great seeing them there. And and it was about, you know, Democrats uniting and and working together. And I think that that's what really this is all about. But at the last candidate forum, the so my 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 colleague Eugene, he misspoke when he talked about Emeryville and Diane Martinez and 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 not not there being an Asian leader in Emeryville. And, you know, and I saw the attacks that he received. And and my technology, my background technology, but it's also in education. And what we want to tell kids is that sometimes you make mistakes by showing up, but it's important that you showed up. And and Eugene showed up. And that's what I think the most important thing.
Hey, thank you. And now Eugene.
Thank you. Thank you. What a what a wonderful thing you said, Kalima. Thank you so much. I'm I'm really concerned. I'm probably one of the few council members that have actually ridden in a squad car recently to take the ground level look at what safety and crime really is on the ground. I did this a few days ago for two hours. And 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 that is kind of the the model that I'm taking. I'm wanting to see things from the front. I want to see what what are the the climate action problems that we face? What are the health, fitness and lifestyle action problems we face? What are the intergenerational and job creation and and education challenges that we face? So working with the city council, I'm about trying to find out what is the truth of the problems that we face and how do we find solutions?
Okay, thank you very much. And now Sukthi.
I was born in India. Ever since I can remember, my family and I moved every two years. New place, new friends, new language, new culture. In the nineties, my family moved to California. I was nineteen. As I looked down from the plane at the San Francisco Bay Area, I knew in my heart and in my soul, this is the place I belonged. My family settled in Sacramento, where I completed law school. But every time I would visit the Bay Area, there was a special feeling in my heart that would make me happy to be here. Then I got a job in the city and I couldn't be happier. I chose to live in Emeryville for the commute and because I love dancing at the Allegro Ballroom. Before I knew it, fourteen years flew by in Emeryville. It is the longest I have lived anywhere. I've become a part of this community and this community has become a part of me. So I'm committed to finding solutions together for Emeryville and look forward to your vote. Thank you.
Okay. And now we shall hear from David.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the league for hosting this event, all the folks at home for taking the time to get to know me, the other candidates and the issues. I'd also like to thank those who have endorsed me, including the official Democratic Party, the Sierra Club, the current mayor of Emeryville, John Bowders, and council members Diane Martinez and Courtney Welch. And to the viewers at home, the most important endorsement you can make, it's yours at the ballot box. So thank you for considering me.
Hey, thank you very much. So everyone, please join me in a round of applause for the candidates. Thank you all for attending and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.